Could you please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I guess we have some, the Affalter Playground Replacement. Who's going to introduce that? That's actually after three, that's the, in my list. Okay, we'll do the public invited to be heard up front then. All right. So we have Kristen Mitchell, so please come forward and state your name and address for the...
Hi, my name is Kristen Mitchell. I'm at 352 Fifth Avenue. And I'm with the, I'm with the Leadership Academy at Silver Creek High School. And so what we do, every senior picks a project for like their senior year to work on. And I've picked the kindness campaign, and that's my project that I'm working on right now. And basically what it is, is just like finding people within the community that are in need, or like have gone through like a traumatic like episode of stuff, or like just need like more support than they're getting. So what I did, I, I've just been like working with like the school and like different like communities throughout like, like Longmont High School and like Silver Creek and like Skyline. And for my, one of my last projects, I went to the public forum about mental health, and I got people within the community to sign white hearts. And I made a wall of hope with like messages of hope and love and like community strength for Longmont. And I would like to present that and have it like hung up here and like have the community be able to see like all the messages and like all the love that we've like collected over the past week.
That'd be awesome.
And I would be really cool to like have the community like see it and like be able to like add on to it or just like look at it.
Well, thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
The next person is Kara Van Bernuth. I probably butchered your name, but you can correct that when you get down here.
Hi, I'm Kari Vaughn Bernuth, and I'm at 1754 Preston Drive. And I am also a part of the Leadership Academy that Kristen was just talking about at Silver Creek. And for my capstone project, I have a project called Breaking the Wall, which is taking place this Saturday at Silver Creek High School in the gyms at 10:00 a.m. And I've hired a national public speaker named Jamie Utz to come and give his presentation called "The Wall." And Jamie talks about when we meet new people, we often make prejudiced snap judgments about them. And he uses the metaphor that every time we make one of those snap judgments, we add a brick to a wall that separates us from really connecting to other people because we already have preconceived ideas of who they are. And so Jamie talks about how we can consciously stop ourselves from making those snap judgments and start to tear down the walls that keep us personally from connecting to other people. And in doing so, we can create diverse and inclusive communities. I wanted to make sure and tell you that this event was happening this Saturday at Silver Creek at 10:00 a.m. And invite you to come and see the presentation that Jamie has. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Jack Jaggersen?
Hi, my name is Zachary Jaggersen, from 512 Clover Basin Drive. And I'm in the same thing as Kari and Kristen from Silver Creek. Mine is a soccer camp to raise awareness and money for childhood cancer. And it is all done through CureCirc. It was founded in 1987. And, and one of the things that they have noticed that there's 40,000 kids that have been, suffered from childhood cancer. And then, and if you go to the paper, it's, it shows a website saying where you can help out, like donations, and the soccer camp's going to be on, on there and saying when it is. And when it is, it's going to be on Sunday, April 26th, from 11:00 to 2:00. And the ages are going to be 3 to 11.
Well, thank you. Beverly Elkins?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Beverly Elkins, and I live at 1418 Ninth Avenue. I'm sorry I'm not a do-gooder as much as these people are, but I'm, I'm coming to you again to ask what progress has been made on this city of Longmont, fees that they have tacked to every piece of everything they do. I tried to reach you, Mayor, by phone, and I kept getting an answering machine. And so I left messages, but you didn't get back to me. And while Mr. Bagley and Mr. Santos tried to direct me to help me get through to these people to get it done, I didn't make very much progress. But I was told that some of you had made a commitment to try to make some of these people come up with some ideas. I'd like to know where that stands. And I would also like to say, it's not going to help me if you have them to cut their rates for seniors or low income or whatever. What I need you to do is have them to cut those fees, those excessive fees that they put on there. There's, you know, for whatever usage you have, there's $10, and then $10, and then $4, and whatever. It just says fee. It's a straight fee. For what? I mean, I know that you, they seem to be doing progress or something, but it hurts a lot of people. I'd like to, maybe one of you have a, have you done anything with that, or can you help me?
Well, this isn't a real forum. We can go back and forth, but you want to take it offline? You can talk to Sandy and Harold offline, and they can direct you with some potential sources for help.
No, I was told that you were working on it. You were told, you told the departments to come to you with, with some...
Right, yeah. And they, they have, but I don't know what they are right now off the top of my head. And this is a forum...
I was told that you said to push it, to do it fast. And nobody's coming, I mean, you still haven't had, and this has been a couple of months now, you know? I'm thinking, but that doesn't seem very fast. I mean, I appreciate anything you can do to help and push it, whatever, but I mean, I'm still getting fees and it still hurts. Okay? Thank you. Who is it that's going to help me here?
Hi, Jeff Thompson?
Jeff Thompson, 1616 Somner Street. I guess my timing is really right. I was hoping this lady would come back and speak to you. See, she hasn't, I, the first time she spoke to the city council, I think, was just a couple of months ago. And so she didn't have much experience at this, and she doesn't understand that you never get a straight answer from the city council. About this economic update from this outfit called the Longmont Area Economic Council. Because I understand that Longmont taxpayers are just part of this council, and the other part of the council is the Chamber of Commerce, if I have that right? That they're another partner? Partnering with the Chamber of Commerce on a Longmont Economic Council is like partnering with Adolf Eichmann on a Human Rights Council. And the reason I say that is this report talks about us losing 254 primary jobs, 254 families that are out of income now, and no analysis as to what's causing that at all. The work of this council has been worthless to us. There's nothing in this report that we can use if we're really concerned about making Longmont a city where everybody can prosper. It doesn't even, it gives us a balance sheet, but no income statement. And we don't even know where their money is coming from or going to. But what we do know is that they're very concerned about the landlords in this city. What this report is all about is vacancy rates. And so what's happening is the taxpayers' money is being used to rent out the big, the commercial property owned by the big landlords. I looked at this economic council report, and I just asked myself, can't Susan Pratt hire her own real estate agency? Can't she pay, you know, can't she run her own business without us subsidizing it? That's just what, that was just my response to that. And this lady talking about the fee, the park maintenance fee? You, you know, that's your explanation for why our tax money is going to help commercial real estate businesses, and you're charging us a park's maintenance fee? It's making me think, is that park's maintenance fee really a Susan Pratt maintenance fee? Or a top operating maintenance fee? The oil company that wants to drill Longmont and that you're in cahoots with? That you gave them leases? Or you gave them property, Longmont property for free from which to drill 32 wells for no compensation?
So we also like to come and speak at public invited to be heard?
This Jeff, is this yours? Oh, somebody's. Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Coombs, Council. I was a little late. Well, I appreciate hearing the kids tonight. It's good, whatever, you know, creative work they're doing. And I heard Beverly speak tonight, and I just noticed, and I hadn't figured it out, my electricity and water bill jumped up about 40%. It's like, what the heck is going on? I thought it was going to go up like 15%. So maybe there needs to be some looking into this because that is really severe. I was paying about 60, and all of a sudden it jumped up to 79 plus, about 80. And I haven't tried to track it down, so I don't, I don't know how relevant that is, but it looks pretty severe. I just, I think we have good counsel, and we have a lot of issues and concerns to really be digging into. And I would just like to mention, in today's times call, our RTD Commissioner Judy Lubow wrote an excellent letter about TPP. I've been talking about it for a couple of years. And Trans-Pacific Partnership. And it's very interesting that every president, Republican or Democrat, always supports a big free trade deal. Well, look what happened with NAFTA. Look what happened with WTO. We're losing millions of jobs and undercutting our wages and democratic structure and environmental protection. That's what TPP is all about, to forfeit the sovereignty of our country to a secret agreement made by big corporations for their own interests and not for the interest of the public. And you will notice that all Republicans who hate President Obama always will support him on this because it's dangerous. And we need to contact our congresspeople and at least stop fast track because it forfeits the right of Congress to participate or negotiate in, in any trade agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public invited to be heard? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close public invited to be heard.
Now, Mayor, it's time for our special presentations. Kathy Crown, Public Works and Natural Resources Project Manager, will be here to present the Affalter Park, or Affalter Playground Replacement.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, City Council. I'm Kathy Crown. I'm a project manager with the Public Works and Natural Resources Department. And I have the pleasure of presenting, I've been working on the Affalter Park Playground Replacement Project. And this is one of the projects that that park and greenway maintenance fee fund is, is funding. And so we're here tonight with the Indian Peaks Elementary 4th Grade Students and Faculty. We've had the unique opportunity to work with this class on the Affalter Park Playground Replacement Project. Many of our neighborhood parks are adjacent to schools strategically. And this one is, this playground happens to be directly adjacent to Indian Peaks Elementary School. So they utilize the playground for their, for their recesses as well as before and after school. So it's a neighborhood park playground as well as highly utilized by the school. So Indian Peaks is a STEM-focused school. And Lynn Hannipal, I'm going to introduce Lynn Hannipal. She got in touch with Sarah Levison and myself. She has a passion for civics and brought it to this 4th grade class. So I'm going to introduce Lynn to introduce the rest of the folks for their special presentation tonight. So this is Lynn.
Honorable Mayor and City Council People, each of my students are students. This is my 4th grade... my fourth grade team here at Indian Peaks, Ms. Horner and Mr. Kitty. And our students together have prepared a short little presentation of all the different things that we did in our work with Kathy Crown. Your patience.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Annelie. We are very excited to be here tonight to share the final design of the Appleton Playground redesign project. We enjoy taking part in all the steps of the redesign process. My classmates and I are here to share what we did at school using the same process, together data from Miss Crown and her team.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Nicholas. In our class, we modeled the playground, made a map of the playground using measurements crea- created clay models of equipment we wanted to see in, on the playground.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Brianna. In social studies class, we, we surveyed all the students in school from preschool to fifth grade plus teachers. We wanted to know what was important to have on the playground. We wanted to know what students wanted to see on the playground, on the new playground. We had, we gave the students options based on the safety fund and not to be expensive. Then we shared it, we shared this data with Miss Crown and the designers.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Annalise. Next, we used the data from our surveys in a design workshop with Miss Crown. In her design, we developed a rough draft for the final design of our playground. Playground.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Nico. After the workshop, we presented our ideas at a public hearing with Mrs. Crown and the design team. We invited the members of our community and the neighborhood. We wanted the community and the neighbors to know the new playground would be safe, fun, and accessible for all kids.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Yvonne. Finally, we want to thank City Councilwoman Levison. Ms. Levison helped us understand how every citizen in the community has a voice in local government. With her encouragement, we learned how citizens who are involved in their local government can make their community better.
Well, thank you very much, Sarah. So, honorable mayor and city council members, the fourth graders of Indian Peaks Elementary then would like to thank the city of Longmont, Ms. Levison, Ms. Crown, and the Park and Recreation Advisory Board for the opportunity to experience local government firsthand, to experience what it means to be an actively involved citizen working to improve life in our community. We look forward to the opening of a new playground in the fall. And thank you for the opportunity to instill citizenship ideals in a lasting and meaningful experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And we have one more thing because my intention was really to thank them for making my job so much easier. And so we do intend to install this playground after school gets out this summer. And so hopefully they'll get to enjoy what their work through their fifth grade year and then also to just take pride in, in all they've done for their neighborhood for years to come. And so with that, I do have a framed copy of the plan for the school that I'd like to present to the students if they, if they're willing to come up and the staff. And it's in appreciation for all this design work that they, they did. So thank you all.
That's what I'm trying to do. I think I've got everyone. Big smile. Let's get one more. Awesome.
Thank you.
Mayor, your next presentation will be made by Jessica Erickson, President of the Longmont Area Economic Council. She'll be presenting their quarterly report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you can give me just one moment, I'll pull my presentation.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Okay, I am here to present the quarterly activities of the Longmont Area Economic Council for the first quarter of 2015. I'll start with talking about primary employer activities. Unfortunately, we are reporting this evening that in the first quarter of 2015, we have seen a net loss to date of primary jobs of 175 jobs. I do want to note that a majority of those are in relation to the phase out, out of Amgen's Longmont operations, which we have been prepared for and are actively working with the company to mitigate and capitalize on the opportunity of the facilities that are off behind. We did have two new companies come to the community, creating 35 jobs. And two new, or two companies in the community did close or relocate out of the community, representing a loss of 39 jobs. Of our existing companies, 21 added 83 new jobs total and 14 cut back resulting in a loss of 254. Again, that's including the, the reduction in, in staff at Amgen. In terms of prospect activity, we are currently working with 34 active prospects. Seven of them are existing employer expansion projects. In addition to these, I wanted to just note an interesting, a couple of interesting projects that we're working on that we're not necessarily considering active prospects right now. We have been approached by a couple of different employers in the community that are headquartered outside of the state of Colorado to help them market to their headquarters in other states opportunities for them to expand their, their labor force here and their employment here in Longmont. So those are really exciting to project, projects to work on because it means the company here is invested here and working with us to help bring new jobs to the community. We've had 11 new prospects in the first quarter of 2015. Three of those prospects have visited us in person and all three have included city representatives in those meetings. Council in this quarter did approve incentives for two prospects, or you all did approve incentives this quarter for two prospects, B.C. Services and Wyland, Inc. And those two companies represent, would represent 193-plus new jobs to Longmont if Longmont is selected for those projects. And we expect to hear that from both, actually, very shortly. For existing primary employer contact, we've had 11 primary employer meetings by economic council staff. You may remember that we are required as part of the city contract to visit 50 primary employers on an annual basis. So a quarter of the way in, kind of, and me not having started in February, we feel like we're on good track, good pace to, to meet that requirement of 50. And city staff has attended four of those meetings. We've had one of the required city leadership meetings with McLean Western. And we are actively planning open houses for existing company expansions, for three existing company expansions over the next 90 days. You may remember that one of the categories of the Advanced Longmont Plan relates to business climate and things that we can do in the community to improve the climate for business. And so did want to bring to your attention that in partnership with city staff and the Longton, Longmont Downtown Development Authority, we did submit a pre-application for enterprise zone designation in strategic qualifying areas of Longmont. And what enterprise zone designation would mean for the community is that specific areas that are of greatest need and of greatest opportunity within the community, if designated as enterprise zone, would offer significant tax incentives or tax benefits for a company to invest in or create jobs in those areas. There's currently no existing enterprise zone in Boulder County, so we would be potentially one of the first. And Longmont and Lafayette with this re-designation period are the only two cities in Boulder County seeking designation. The next step, we'll continue to work with the city and with the Downtown Development Authority to submit a formal and full application in July of this year. Oh, sorry. Small business activity, with the hiring of Janine Whittingham, we've been able to significantly increase our support and provide the services as required by the contract of the city for development of small businesses within the community. So with, with that, we currently have four downtown Longmont businesses pursuing retail conversion grants totaling $30,000. Five downtown companies pursuing startup grants totaling $10,000. And four Longmont companies that have applied for small business lending program loans totaling $89,955. And three Longmont businesses were awarded the $1,000 John Schaller Destination Boot Camp. Two of those have attended the boot camp already and one is scheduled to attend, I believe, either later this month or next month. Additionally, in small business activity in partnership with the SBDC, Janine has held 35 one-on-one meetings with existing and startup businesses, five of those being multicultural businesses. This represents 200 hours of the 400 hours that SBDC has committed to providing to the city in terms of one-on-one consulting time. We've held three workshops in the city in partnership with the Boulder SBDC, two Business Planning Essentials that had a total of 35 attendees and a Marketing Essentials that had 20 attendees. This is a higher level of attendance and participation that was anticipated when we started offering these courses in the community. We are actively working on partnerships with the Latino Chamber of Commerce and the Colorado Minority Business Office to bring additional multicultural business resources to Longmont to have them directly here available to our multicultural businesses. And we are in the final phase of formalizing a partnership with the Colorado Procurement Technical Assistance Center, PTAC. And we'll be announcing what that partnership looks like in Maine, but basically it will bring those resources right here to Longmont as In the area of entrepreneurship and innovation, we are actively part of the Longmont Startup Week planning, having helped to identify and secure speakers for the event. We are a significant event sponsor. And we are working with some of our other Advanced Longmont partners to present a business opportunity session on the first day of Startup Week. We did work with, have the opportunity to work with the Tinker Mill on an application for a Colorado Advanced Industry Infrastructure Grant. And what that does is it basically allows them to take the money that was invested in them by the city and by the economic council and leverage that for even, even more funding through the state advanced industries program. And we have a meeting planned with the Tinker Mill and Launch Longmont, as well as a Business Accelerator Group to discuss bringing an accelerator facility to Longmont that would enhance the entrepreneurial services that are already being provided by those two organizations here in the community. And on marketing, wanted to provide the statistics related to our online activity. So we've seen 4,730 unique visits this quarter to, or new visitors this quarter to our website. Have had 72 social media postings. We now have 1,190 social media followers, have seen 580 search engine referrals and 18 positive media mentions. All of these represent increases over previous quarter and previous year. We have engaged Aviset Communications to assist in the naming of our small business programming to fully encompass, encompass all of the services that we now provide related to small business. An RFP will be issued later this week for economic council and advanced Longmont, what we're calling internal and what Advanced Longmont calls the internal marketing strategy, which is really the strategy related to the branding of the economic council itself and our new role within the community and the branding of the Advanced Longmont Plan so that we can effectively communicate the progress of that plan throughout the community. The Advanced Longmont Plan really calls for two phases of marketing, the first being that internal piece to make sure that we're all on the same page in, in how we're communicating what we're communicating. And the larger, more time-consuming investment of the full marketing and branding of the community for economic development purposes. And we have been actively having communication and conversation with Harold and his staff related to that as well. And so we'll have some more information to bring about in the near future on that. Also did want to provide a couple of organizational updates. I wanted to report that we have secured four new private sector economic partners. All of our economic partners are listed on our website. So anybody interested in seeing who we're getting our money from, that's available there. We did engage National Community Development Services to assisting, increasing our private sector support for the economic council and advanced Longmont. We're really looking at a private sector fundraising effort that goes out to the community, the business community, standard economic development, investment community, and asks them to fund specific portions of the Advanced Longmont Plan. So they're really investing in where they see the greatest value for economic development to them within the community. And we did sign a lease for new space at 15th in Maine. We'll have some interesting neighbors. And we will be moving in mid-May. He's not even paying attention to me. And then finally, wanted to report that we did hold a board retreat last month to craft a new mission for the economic council. And the mission that was crafted, and thank, thank you to those of you that were present and participated in that, mission was, that was crafted is that we lead a comprehensive collaborative economic development strategy to promote and strengthen our community's economic health. And some strategies that we identified for how we achieve that mission are by strengthening Longmont's competitive position, marketing Longmont as the ideal location for new quality job creation and business investment opportunities, serving as the gateway to Longmont for all business, facilitating infrastructure investments that build capacity, supporting the creation and retention of quality jobs, advancing opportunities for entrepreneurship and innovation, and advocating on behalf of all Longmont businesses. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions from Jessica?
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Well, I just did have one question.
Sure.
I know that the Chamber of Commerce, you know, does sometimes attend our meetings, but I'd like to clarify that those, Chamber Commerce and your organization, LAEC, are two separate organizations. They have different charters, different people on boards. They're not joined at the hip, so to speak.
Yes, absolutely. We certainly partner very closely and with the Broomfield Chamber of Commerce where the missions of the two organizations do intersect. However, we are two separately chartered organizations with different board members, different funding mechanisms and all of that.
Thank you. Councilmember, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to say you've gotten off to a great start, even though we've lost some primary jobs. You've done a lot of work in a short amount of time and, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
So I would add that in, when you talk about the Advanced Longmont Plan and the partners that meet, there are a number of partners in, in this, this collaboration. So you obviously have the Longmont Chamber of Commerce, you have the Latino Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Development Association, Front Range Community College, the School District. And so all of those have a vested interest in the Advanced Longmont. District, and so, all of those have a vested interest in the Advanced Longmont Plan, and we all have taken a different piece, and so, there are a number of partners in that in implementing the Advanced Longmont Plan.
And there is actually a list of all of those partners that was provided in this report.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you explain a little bit about the enterprise zone work? Number one, is it the same enterprise zone concept at the federal level that many of us might be familiar with from past federal administrations when there were enterprise zones being created 20, 30 years ago? And is the state program different than the federal program?
It's probably different in some ways when you get into the details, but basically the same concept. What it does is it identifies areas throughout the state based on meeting certain criteria related to average income, unemployment, and population growth that's either higher or lower than what the state average is as areas of need. And then, it's up to the local communities to look at those areas of need within their community and identify areas of greatest opportunity and pursue designation of enterprise zone for that. And the purpose of the enterprise zone is to encourage investment within those designated areas because of the increased need in those areas.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. What exact building?
What exactly?
What exact building on 15th and Main are you moving into?
630 15th Avenue.
Which one is it?
It's...
Oh, you're moving into my building? My exact building?
Yes.
What street?
100A.
100A? Just keep it down. You're right, I missed that one. I'm like, wait, 630 15th? Wait a second, that's my building. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm sure that members of the public will figure where now and get hoots, so just bring donuts and I'll do what you want.
Every day.
And you like Merrill's in there, too.
Yes.
Happy bandits. Not have flunders.
Thank you, Jessica.
Come on, you're welcome.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, next is your first and only study session item, community conversations on behavioral health services in the Longmont community. This will be presented by Karen Roni, Director of Community Services, and Mike Butler, our Public Safety Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council, Karen Roni, Community Services, and you also know my colleague, Mike Butler, our Public Safety Chief. So, we're here with a brief update. We aren't here with a lot of specific solutions and strategies at this point, but we do want to, you know, just give a brief update of what happened at the forum on April 13th, and really talk a little bit about, you know, where we're headed in general, and certainly open that up for any conversation and direction and guidance from City Council about our work moving forward. So, tonight, you had the opportunity to receive the Wall of Hope from the Silver Creek Leadership Academy, and that was a great component of the mental health forum on April 13th. And so, several of the council members were there, and the mayor, we really appreciate your participation. So, certainly, many of you heard the conversations and the information in that forum, and I think what came out of that, I think what resonated with me is that there were lots of different opinions. People were really in different places in terms of their recovery and what they needed and what they thought needed to happen, but I think two things came out of that. One, the community really did express deep appreciation for an opportunity to come together as an entire community and to talk about events that took place in March, and really to talk about what could the community do in addition to all the other things that are happening in this community to address the issues of mental health and to make sure that there is greater awareness of mental health issues and that there is greater access to services, and that we have more services and more support available for people who need it when they do need it. So, we had about 75 people there. We had the mental health partners that talked a bit about mental health issues and the stigma and the process of recovery. And then, we had an opportunity for people to join and really listen and be a part of the booths from providers in the community to just talk about what some of their needs are, to get access to resources, maybe talk about what they could do to help out. And we had a place where people could sign up and say if they want to do more, if they want to be involved in more conversations about what the community can do. We encouraged them to sign up. We had over 25 people that signed up that evening, and I believe Chief Butler has indicated many more people have followed up and said, you know, they want to help. So, a couple of things, and then, I will certainly invite Mike to share his thoughts about this, and then really just open up to some conversation. So, we had information in your packet about some work that has been happening in our community the past several months around the issue of mental health services and some of the barriers that we have all encountered to access to services, some of the fragmentation, and then begin to talk about what, as a group of providers, we can do to help really figure out which are access issues that we might be able to do something about, and which are gaps in services that we might be able to do something about that, or to figure out what we could do to help bridge some of the gaps in services. So, we did include that information in your packet. We are making some progress. We have a ways to go, but at least we've had some great conversations with the providers and have begun to address, knock down some of those barriers to access for services just by coming together and having conversations around that. Now, we hope to continue to have those conversations with the providers, and, you know, and I think what you hear Chief Butler talk about and advocate so strongly for is that we need to bring many more voices and conversation, to the conversation from the community about what can our community at large also do to really, you know, make a difference, to really bring to the forefront issues around mental health, mental illness, and what can we as community members do in addition to what providers are trained to do to really help people who are struggling and help people get access to the services that they need. So, what we, now we're going to do is we're going to have more conversations. We'll probably be beginning those in the next month, probably in May, and we're going to see where this leads us. That's very specific, I know, but guys, I think we tried to warn you that we wouldn't have all the answers, but I think what we have seen is that we have a lot of community interest in coming to the table and really talking about what else as a community we can be doing. So, I will invite Mike to have some comments, and we'll...
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Mike Butler, I'm the Public Safety Chief. Up until a couple of months ago, I have not talked much about this issue in our community, and it's something that public safety chiefs or police chiefs or fire chiefs typically don't enter into the realm. All we do is mostly respond to these kinds of issues in our community. And I thought, you know, something else needed to happen. The response that we have in public safety is getting enormous, and it's getting larger and larger and larger. A significant amount of our resources are targeted and focused on people who are struggling with mental illness, and along with that, you know, there is addiction in the mix, there's homelessness in the mix, and there's other issues, including crime, in the mix. In fact, I don't know what the percentages are, but we know that a large percentage of people that are housed in our prisons in this country do suffer from mental illness. And so, you know, for the most part, our response has been the same over the last several decades, and I think people are doing the best they can. I think the mental health providers in our community and elsewhere are doing all they can to try to figure out how to address the challenges that Karen brought up in terms of ensuring that there's access, ensuring that people know about the resources that are out there. But, you know, about two months ago, I sent an email to my boss, Harold, and the directors around a typical 10-hour shift that the police department sees, and in that particular 10-hour shift, we had like eight to nine cases involving people who were suffering from mental illness, all of them suicides. We had one SWAT mission, and so, our officers and firefighters just continually respond to this, and we all know what somewhere that definition of insanity is in terms of doing things over and over again, expecting new results, and we got to do things differently. That's how I see it. And some of you have heard my comments or read about my comments, and, you know, like Karen says, we don't come with any specific formulas or templates or action plans tonight. And we don't believe that we necessarily have the answers, and maybe not even most of the answers. Where we're coming from is we believe that our community has a lot of the answers. It's just that our community's never been engaged to the point where perhaps it needs to be to have the kinds of conversations it needs to have to address these kinds of issues. I know, as I look around here, many of you have been in our community for a long, long time, and you're aware of what goes on in our community, you're aware of all the great things that happen, the level of compassion, the level of care. You probably all know people who are doing things maybe in a very quiet, non-fanfare kind of way in terms of helping others, but we often believe that those people exist by the thousands in our community. And I also happen to believe that while our mental health providers are doing all they can, it's not enough, and I don't think it ever will be. And I don't think this is the kind of issue that we can just designate and relegate to professionals within our system. This is the kind of issue, and I try to equate it to something in our community that maybe we all experienced, and perhaps this is a little bit conservative, but I think this is the flood times at least 100 in terms of the devastating and deadly effects that it has on our community. And it's not just once, it's every day of every year. And so, this is, you know, I don't know how much more I can say on that, other than to say that over the last three years, we did some analysis. We found out that 40 people killed themselves in this community. This is from public safety data, in the last three years. Over the last three years, we responded to 2,100 calls for service that involve suicide people, either ideation or attempted acts. And I also want to say that a lot of these cases that we go to can be very volatile. They're just very unpredictable. We have no idea what's going to happen. You know, our officers have all been trained in terms of how to recognize various forms of mental illness and how to calm the circumstances, but even with that, it can be difficult. And what you don't hear about in the media are the cases where we have the suicide by cop that are reconciled and solved without incident, without anybody getting hurt. What you will hear is that, you know, what's being broadcasted in all of our living rooms is everything that doesn't go well. Well, a lot of these issues that we have involve people who struggle with mental illness. And I haven't even talked about the incidents that occurred about a month ago, that cases probably involving people who were suffering from mental illness. And I don't know about you, but one of the things that I've seen in our response to these kinds of tragic circumstances, certainly the Aurora Theater, the Newtown incidents, is that the issue of mental illness arises very quickly, and it stays in kind of fever-pitched form for maybe a few weeks, and then it goes away, and then we're back to business as usual. And that's where we're at. And so, for me, the energy around what happened a month ago, it's not as great or focused as it was. And so, here we are. We either let these issues continue to slide away and do business as usual, or we try to figure out how we can do things differently. And that's why I posed the idea of having new conversations and the idea of engaging and involving as many people in our community as we possibly can, and to understand the magnitude of this issue, the sense of urgency that exists, and to begin to develop vis-à-vis our citizens the kinds of templates, formulas, and ideas that our citizens can take ownership for. And I'm not saying that government, nonprofits, and mental health providers can't be a part of presenting choices and alternatives, but I think we're all going to be better if we can engage literally hundreds of thousands of people in our community who have the kind of compassion and want to make a difference. And I've lived in this community for over three decades, and I know many, many, many people who will begin to offer a lot more than they're offering towards this issue, in fact, probably towards other social issues. I tend to think that this is something that we can begin to utilize, this kind of method with a lot of the things that we're doing. And so, there's no magic panacea, there's no magic bullet here, there's no magic program. This perhaps will only happen, one conversation, one gathering, one person, one opportunity at a time. It's just that we're going to have to stay with it. And so, that's what we offer tonight in terms of how we move forward. We also believe that the city can be, serve a very important role in these processes, and that is one of convener and one of facilitator. And so, we think that is a critically important role as we identify people in our community who may be involved in the mix, convene them, facilitate these groups, develop mechanisms, help develop mechanisms and structures that can sustain themselves over time, but these ideas, suggestions, and a lot of the solutions would come from the community. I know that has a little abstractness and a little conceptual attached to it, but I think it's time that we do something different. And you've heard me say this before, and so, that's where we're coming from, and as Karen said, we'll be here to answer questions and certainly listen to perspectives you have. And I want to thank you all for saying that this was an important enough issue to bring in front of you. I think this is a first really good step, and knowing you, I know you all have the compassion and the sensibilities to try to figure out how we can move forward with this issue, so my gratitude to all of you. Thank you.
I guess I have a question. Something always comes to my mind is, are there cities similar to Longmont, about our size, that have, you know, like 50% less suicides or less problems, or, and if so, what do they do differently as a community? Are there other models or other programs we could look at? You know, I always like to do basically copy success stories, if there is success, or maybe there isn't in this thing. I mean...
Mayor, we haven't done that analysis, but given all my conversations with police chiefs around the country, we're not unique. And as I said, the jails are filled with people who struggle with mental illness, and a lot of the things that you see going on in the news involve people who struggle with mental illness, so we're not unique in that regard. There may be a city or two out there, I don't know. I can tell you that there have been communities that I'm familiar with. One is Plano, Texas, that is a very, very wealthy community, and perhaps the wealthiest community in Texas, that suffered a very serious public safety or social issue with suicide amongst their teenagers. That was a few years ago, but it's one of those things that rears itself in every community, and I don't think we're any different than anybody else.
Counselor member Finlay.
Did you want to say something, Karen? How could you tell? Yeah, I think what I just would add to what Mike was saying is that, you know, we did include some information in your council communication, so certainly, we have not done exhaustive research, but as I mentioned, we, there has been a group that's been working on some of these issues, and so, you know, you bet there are communities out there that are looking at different models, that certainly are looking at how to engage their citizens in different ways in terms of, you know, having more mental health first aid opportunities, the Mental Health America, which is the pro bono service opportunity. So, there are mechanisms out there, and we absolutely will look at, you know, what has worked in other communities and help to study that, and try to figure out what is, what's going to be best for our community and what we might come up with that is something new and innovative that no one else has tried. But certainly, there's some other models out there, and we would want to look at those two and learn from those.
Thank you. Counselor member Finlay.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. When's the next meeting, the convening of all the people who want to help?
I'm sorry, question again?
The next community meeting we're convening?
Mm-hmm.
When would that be?
We have names of 25 to 30 people, and we're going to be calling them shortly to determine, to figure out a good time for them, and that's going to be the start. As Karen says, we're hoping to do this as soon as possible. As Karen says, we're hoping to do this as soon as possible.
And the mental health first aid class that we heard about, is there a way to get some of those classes for the public to attend? Because we all, we all need that training, quite frankly. Every public servant, you know, got elected to city council and, and people will call me, and I won't know exactly how I should react to some of them and must refer them to others. And it would be, it would be nice really for me to have that class as well. But I know there's other people out there in the community who would, who would benefit from that. People from faith-based organizations, people who deal with people on a regular basis might need that sort of assistance. So is there a way we can encourage those classes to be held?
Mayor and Councilmember Finley, the short answer is yes. So, so it is, it is, we have people in our community that are, are trained to teach mental health first aid. We were thinking that that might be an action step because it is something that is very specific and actionable, you know, that we could pursue. So, so that certainly is on, on our list. Because there's, I think there's a lot of things that can happen simultaneously, and I think that's important to talk about, too. So as we are continuing to engage the community and have conversations, there are some actions that we can take that make a lot of sense. So, so I would say that we can move forward and, and certainly explore offering additional mental health first aid classes. I know we talked to Connie Seifert, one of the assistant superintendents with the school district, you know, and she mentioned that they had, not long ago, 200 of their, their principals and leaders in the schools went through mental health first aid for the very reasons that you, you know, that you talked about. So that is an actionable item we could take.
I actually talked to some students today at Doing Democracy Day, and they really thought that something like that would be helpful for them as student leaders to recognize exactly what, what is a mental health issue at that age group. Polly and I talked to several students who thought that that would be a helpful class for them to have as maybe, you know, a health class at school. It is part of our health, you know, it's physical and mental health. And we should encourage the school district to, to do that as well. But we have a long way to go, and I know that you'll keep us on track.
Councilmember Anderson.
I want to thank both of you, thank, first of all, and all the people who presented at that. It was a really important meeting to have. And one of the things I was, two points, one of the things I was thinking about there was that it would be useful to also reach out to, I mean, I don't know where to get the money and the time for the schools to do this, but the schools, that's a wonderful idea. But as, as Bonnie said, it's the students, too, who need to understand how they themselves work and how, how their friends work. And when, you know, we, that's a difficult age, and people, nobody behaves particularly normally, but still, people do know when, when it's gotten out of hand. And then there need to be, they need to know some resources. And so places that would be good to have researchers or offer these classes are churches. That's part of what church is about. And service groups like the Kiwanis and the Lions, that's what they're about, too. And the senior center, because it isn't just about dementia when you get older, it's, people get very mentally ill, too, sometimes. And they need to understand what the resources are for that. So if, if we could get some of the leaders, then they can carry it on. But I really think the school system is very, very important. The other thing I, I kind of wanted to emphasize, because I talked to some people at that health, mental health forum, and also I talked to Mrs. Atkins about her son. And what many people have talked about is the fact that the adult caretakers in these people's lives, whether they're parents of any age, I know that the Martinez family dealt with this off and on, yes. And for legal reasons, the adults who are trying to help their adult person who has mental illness are shut out. And that person can't advocate for themselves. They don't even go get help. We need to be able to get somebody else in from their life who will be their champion. And persistently, though, the adult who is taking, the other person who's trying to help the person gets shut out for legal reasons that I understand, but it's impossible. Maybe there's a way we could sign a waiver and say, okay, we'll let you participate in their therapy and in some decision-making. But when, when people say, "Please don't release my son," like one of the people that I was talking to who spoke at the forum, and the son is let out, and then the son does something, gets in worse trouble, it's, it's very difficult. There has to be some way to be able to draw in more, more people to caretake, do the caretaking for somebody. Anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't really have anything, I have no expertise in this field, other than I feel like I'm, as a, as a local politician and as an attorney, I understand the topic. But I don't know the solution. And so the only comment, I just didn't want to be silent tonight without saying, "Good job." I've said it many times, you're kind of like the conscience of our community, Karen, you and Kathy, chief. I was just sitting here thinking that, I don't think it's any small irony that you're not the police chief or the fire chief, you're the public safety chief. And I think that maybe just that word kind of puts it in a proper frame of reference. That's what you're doing, you're keeping us safe. You know, that's what you're supposed to do. And so I don't know if you'd ever thought of that, had you been the police chief, but looking out for our public safety, which is good. I have no idea what the solution is. And how you, how you begin, I don't know, but it sounds like you guys have got a great start, pulling 25 to 30 professionals together. I was very proud to stand at your shoulder that day that you had your press conference, chief. And I think that you guys are on the right track, and I don't think emotion's necessary because you guys are doing what you need to do. But I say any resources you guys need to continue down this path, you know, you've got, you've got my support, and I'm sure you've got all our support. So you're doing, thank you for your work.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Some background in my family, I have some other knowledge around this issue. My, my father was chief of staff of a VA hospital that was a primary and outpatient care facility for veterans with encountering mental illness. I have a sister-in-law who's a licensed therapist with a doctorate in psychology. I really think that there's not one approach. I think in, in the community, when we've had these two close incidents, I think it's so jarring to the senses that it's almost an unbelievable circumstance to happen. But as you pointed out, these things have been there, and they have been there for a long time. I think that the first step of having that forum and bringing us the information is great, because if you're not willing to talk about things, nothing will ever get done. I also found that it was a great serendipitous point today that during the Doing Democracy Day, one of the topics was mental health in the schools. And the students really had come together in all the groups that were doing the, the mental health issue and thinking that they needed to have something in school as perhaps part of the health curriculum. But I, I think that we should even go beyond that, because even with those students in a classroom, so I think one of them talked to me and said, "Well, you know, when we're learning that in a classroom, we're learning it for grade." And so some of the nuances about having people learn information but not ask to have it put into practice is something that not only can you learn the information, but taking that extra step of knowing what to do. And some students that I talked to, they weren't even really sure what signs of mental illness would be for their friends. Whether it would be, you know, anorexia, bulimia, or, you know, if somebody was threatening something, and they said, "Well, I'm not sure if they were just joking," or if it was they were doing it to, to get a shock effect, or they were doing it because it seemed like, you know, kind of peer pressure, social pressure to get attention, this is what you do or say. And so even they couldn't determine what was appropriate and whether or not they could take a step. They doubted their own confidence, not even knowing how they would react in a situation if they had a friend who was in serious danger, mental health issue. And I think we have to do not just the education piece for grade in school, but create a pathway, a resource. I mean, again, the cities and the school district working together to convene and provide information to people that's, that's very accessible. It's almost an impossible problem to get your head around, because it's not just one thing. Mental health takes many different forms, and it can be unexpected. But I, I really think maybe we should look at our human service budget to see whether or not this year, and maybe for a few years, could we add an increased focus when we're looking at our human service budget to see if we decided we were going to want, and council can do this during budget time, or we could do it through our council contingency fund, maybe add an extra $20,000 out of our contingency fund for groups that address mental health issues in our community. And see whether or not we can't begin to get some of those resources gelled together in the, in the community. I think one of the, the, one of the things we don't talk about with mental health either is the mental health of very young children who are put in these toxic stress situations where their families are falling apart, they might have, you know, domestic violence that they see, and these very, very small children suffer serious mental health issues that go undetected, maybe until they get into school or further down in their life. And again, you never know when it's going to hop up. So treating adults and teens and, and children, I think you have to look at that whole spectrum. So whatever we can do, I think we need to start doing something. And it may not all come from the city. It may come from those 25 people that wanted to do something. Maybe they want to start a meetup group, and they want to meet informally and just have the entire community that wants to talk about mental health and what we can do as a whole community. And then ask for, you know, speakers to come in, and maybe the city can help facilitate with that. But let some of this bubble up from the grassroots, because that's where, you know, the problems are.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the two of you for bringing this to council tonight. It's an important topic we need to talk about. Nobody talks about mental health. There's the stigma associated with it, for one thing. There's all these other things in your life. For council, it's priority day-based budgeting, it's the flood recovery, it's all this other stuff. We never get around to talking about what is really at the root of our community, and that's its people. And how can we take care of that? And how can we make sure that everybody in this community has access to, to any kind of health need, whether it be mental health or whether it be physical health? And the stigma associated with that really has kind of taken the conversation off the table, in my opinion, over the last few decades, or maybe forever, I don't know. So we need to, I think it's a good start, have, be the convenor and facilitator, get a conversation started. If we don't talk about it, we won't fix it. I think if you did a root cause analysis of what was causing mental illness, there'd be so many topics, you wouldn't be able to cover them all. I think we'd have to, I think, I would like to suggest that we take this like you'd eat an elephant, one bite at a time. Figure out where we can do, have the biggest impact first, and start to drill into it from there, and educate even more and more people about the issue. I mean, we're faced with a society that the cost of these services, in a lot of cases, is not covered by insurance. Or if it is, it's very limited in the amount of coverage that you get out of, for mental health. They'll give you $2 million to get a cancer fixed, but they won't, they won't help you fix your head. So that's another conversation we could be having also outside of the community, as a society as a whole. When we have an epidemic nationwide, with all the activity that was going on the last few years, was, you know, the theaters and school shootings and our two recent incidents, it just shows that there's a bigger problem out there than we're willing to admit, and we need to address it. So if we don't talk about it, we'll never solve it. And I would encourage the conversation to get it going. So, thank you. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Okay, now it's time for mayor and council comments. I guess I'd like to start out on a positive note. Elizabeth Finn, the CU Boulder Croft, won the Pulitzer Prize for her book on history on, about the Plains Indians. I think she's a Longmont citizen, so that's pretty neat.
That's really cool.
Yeah. So, you know, I just thought I'd like to share some good news about some great people in our community of Longmont. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. That was first on my list, too. I think that was so cool. She is a resident of Longmont and won the Pulitzer Prize. That's so cool. And I also really appreciate the students we had here today, both from Silver Creek and from Indian Peaks. It is so refreshing and, and uplifting to see those student leaders doing things, good things for the community. That's the kind of community activity we need to encourage and, and build ourselves up rather than tear ourselves down. I want to also mention my business of the week. Went this last weekend to Rigazzi's. Rigazzi's Grill at 1135 Francis Street, Italian restaurant, family-owned, great service. Saw many friends there, hadn't been there in years, and I will go back soon. It was awesome. Go try Rigazzi's.
Councilmember Anderson.
I, too, would like to thank everyone who participated in Doing Democracy Day. And Kent Willman wanted me to be sure to thank the city and the city council for allowing the use of chambers. I think they've used chambers for several years now, and he said they really appreciated it. They were thankful to have the space. It always works for them, and so thank you for making that happen, Harold. I'd also like to mention Doing Democracy Day had lots of sponsors. I will hold up the sponsor because I can't read them all. And the other point about Doing Democracy Day is that it wasn't just public school students this year. There were two, there were students from two other high schools, the Crossroads School, which is here in downtown, and then Faith Baptist Church, Baptist School, rather, sent students, too. I also want to let you know, I was here to judge the finals, and there were three finalists, and the topics were race and justice, should youth be on the school board, which I thought was a really interesting topic, and then immunizations. And I believe that the immunization group were the winners, and somebody will certainly correct me if I was not correct on that. But I always find it interesting when the topics go up and we walk in, when I saw students being on board, I was thinking, "Oh, they're going to come and ask us to be on boards and commissions. Oh, wow, wouldn't that be cool?" No, they only wanted to talk about being on the school board. And I'm like, "Well, why wouldn't you want to be helping the city council make decisions and input for something that's your future city, that you might want to come back to?" Or, you know, "Or don't go away to college and stay here and go to school." I just, you know, it's interesting how our own lens and experience kind of filter down to those issues. I also would like to bring up another topic on what's happening in the state house around urban renewal. And I know, I think Sandy's outside still, but there was, there is a Senate bill, 135- And I know, I think Sandy's outside still, but there was, there is a senate bill, 135, which I know we didn't take the position on as a council, there have been several amendments to that bill. And then there's a house bill, which passed, I think it's, I want to say, is it 13, House Bill 1348, which is very bad as far as what cities can do with, with urban renewal and TIP. And I know this is a, a tool that our city has used very judiciously. We only ever had one, one project. So Sandy's approaching, and so I'll just wait till Sandy gets down. Hi, I'm talking urban renewal. So Sandy, would you bring back information, would you bring information next week, both on senate bill 15135, and then house bill 1348, I believe it is? And the urban renewal bills?
What was the first one?
Yeah. The first one, I think, is House Bill 15135.
Okay.
And that one, and that one, I know, has been amended since it was introduced several different ways, and, and added things in with a lot of consultation from other groups. And then, I think the most damaging bill that's come up is that house bill that passed the house. So I don't know what happened today down at the state house, but if you wouldn't mind bringing us that information, so that, it, it may be that neither bill is absolutely good, but if we were given a choice as the council to support one bill that's better than the worst case, would we want the less worst case? And I guess I'd like to, to get that from, a discussion from council members.
So Mayor Coombs and members of council, 1348, which is the bill that has already passed the house, by the way, Representative Foot voted no in committee, and I think temporary vote. That should be in your packet already for consideration next week. So the one that's not there is senate bill 135. The reason that we didn't bring senate bill 135, even though it's a CML-sponsored bill, is that it does add, you know, additional things that need to happen with respect to special districts and such being added to your urban renewal board. And so, it's not particularly helpful for the city, and CML's certainly doing their best to try to stave off the issues that have come up around urban renewal. But my guess is that by the time we meet next Tuesday, both those bills will have met their end, one way or another, would be my guess. But either way, 1348's already in your packet, and we're recommending an opposed position. 135, I'm sure Sarah can help me to get information for next week as well.
And I think CML had a position paper in January that may have been sent to the general membership, every elected official in every member city around that. And I guess whether or not, I just want to make sure that the worst bill doesn't get passed by us sitting on the sidelines. That's my big concern. And then, and then lastly, next week on Tuesday, we will be having a visit from National League of City staff around, it's a site visit to the city on our technical assistance grant on the early childhood education alignment that Kellogg has been funding through NLC. So I would hope everyone comes to the pre-session, and NLC staff will give you updates about what we're doing, and, and information on how we're doing this leadership on this issue differently than the other cities, and, and in some ways better. So I look forward to having you guys meet with Tanja and Katie, who I've been working with for almost two years now.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just very briefly, I'm surprised they weren't here tonight, but just a reminder to council and everybody who might care, that over at the Boulder County Fairgrounds tomorrow from four till seven, they're having the Youth of the Earth Festival. And so, I didn't hear anything about that tonight, so just, my daughter's in, my, my daughter's all, my daughter's involved, so I wanted to make sure I support that. Don't worry, Mayor, we'll get to you in a second. The, the...
What are you gonna say about the mayor?
Oh, yeah, he's in trouble. And then also, my question is, there is a, there's a meeting at six o'clock on Thursday the 23rd regarding a pool feasibility study? Is that a public meeting? And that's not a surprise, I was just curious, because I'm looking at my calendar, like, what else am I missing this week? And it just came up. Do we have permission to go?
We will get back with you. I'm not seeing that on my calendar.
All right.
So I cannot answer that question.
Okay.
We will, we will provide that information to council.
All right. I was just curious, I'd had some people ask, and I, I didn't know the answer. So if you'd let me know, that'd be great. They, actually, I think it's at the St. Vrain Memorial Building at 700 Longspreek Avenue. And then, as Mayor Porton, since the mayor is too inconsiderate to announce his own birthday, the, when is your birthday, Mayor?
Tomorrow.
It's tomorrow! So I guess we're supposed to sing happy birthday now.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, over, over the hill.
Forty...
Poor mayor. Yes. Mind of a 23-year-old mayor. So who has perfect pitch, anyone? Anybody, your daughter, Councilmember Levison? On behalf of, on behalf of the city council, do you want to take the mic and start us off with a note? Thank you.
Okay. I guess, you know, I have to channel my inner Alex Samori. Okay. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mayor. Happy birthday to you.
All right. Thank you.
City Mayor, do you have any comments?
Mayor, council, I do have a couple of comments. Looking on the city calendar, we cannot find the meeting that you're talking about. So, I'm not sure, so maybe we get with you after this and figure out or see the invite, so, one issue. The other point that we want to, we want to get some information from council, we are working on a joint meeting with the Boulder County Commissioners, and we wanted to see if council had any ideas, or any items that they would want to place on an agenda to discuss with the Boulder City, Boulder County Commissioners.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yes. Purchasing property in the general improvement district, number one. I, I don't mind that Boulder County's expanding, I really like having them in downtown, but they're taking property off the tax rolls. We should at least have some say on, as they do with, well, we kind of do with RAGA with open space, we should have that type of agreement when it comes to our general business district and/or other retail properties that go for sale.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes. One of the discussions that came up at the Visit Longmont Retreat as a working goal for this year was to engage the, the county in a pretty serious discussion about doing some substantial improvements at the county fairgrounds. And I think a couple of us from the Visit Longmont Board, we're gonna try to talk to each commissioner individually, but I would like to put that on the agenda, because we've had it discussed in, I think, Advanced Longmont, stuff was discussed, it was discussed in the Economic Vitality Task Force, it was discussed when we were first talking about the Urban Renewal Authority and the TIP at the mall, in general, to bring that up, but in a way where we can have a discussion, but not just tell the commissioners, oh gee, we think you, you need to invest $10 million to make the fairgrounds look wonderful. Especially since it is not at any kind of retail activity or sales tax activity that goes on, is not anything, because it's wholly cattie-owned property, not technically in the city of Longmont, we would not generate, you know, revenue from that. We might have spillover benefits, but again, I don't know whether or not we can have a discussion about, you know, a public-public partnership. And I would also like to mention, on the point that Councilmember Santos brought up about when we have special taxing districts, and they go from being private entities that pay the base sales tax and, and other assessments, to a nonprofit entity, whether it be government or nonprofit. This has been an issue that's come up and has been, I don't know how much it's changed the equation with LDDA, but I know there's no even mechanism for the taxing district to know that properties prior to the sale closing are going off the tax rolls. I'd also like to maybe bring up a general discussion with the county on payment in lieu of taxes. You know, maybe there is a contribution that they can make and other nonprofits when they're in these special district areas. I know that this is not a issue that's frequently discussed in Colorado, but I know back east, a lot of the towns where the large universities are, they do work with the universities that are constantly expanding campuses and owning land in the town for payment in lieu of taxes. And I know in other cities where there's a lot of federal government installations, they do get some kind of payment in lieu of taxes.
I'd like to make a comment on the discussion about the fairgrounds. We did discuss that last time we met with them, and, but, and the Chamber of Commerce asked me to ask them to do something, but nobody has ever said what they want. You have to, you have to say what you want, not just, we want it to be nicer. It has to be, do you want broadband? Do you want, it has to be specific. Because otherwise, what are they supposed to say? I'd like to discuss if there's any possibility for doing anything on a county-wide basis or, or in conjunction with them, or getting some grants having to do with homelessness and affordability and low-income housing. And what kind of efforts we can work on together as the county. Thank you.
Okay. Not a comment, Mayor.
City Attorney, comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned.